I'm calling this meeting to order at 7 o'clock on the 10th of November. For those people in the audience that were copies of the agenda, if you needed it, I do have three deletions or changes from, one change from the agenda, which is where it says review and approval of the minutes of the November meeting, it should say October. Other than that, do I have any additions or deletions from anybody from the minutes?
Nope.
None?
Okay, may I have a motion?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Then I have a review and approval of the minutes from the October meeting, and I do have two changes in there. In the header, it says September, it should say October, and in the schedule for the next meeting, it says October and it should say November. I really have my dates mixed up.
Move approval of the minutes as amended.
Good. Time's up. Do I have a second, Jill?
Second, Ben.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jill?
And I abstain.
And one extension because there was a few. Okay, so comes to be made part of the meeting, which is why we're all here. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and for being online and pay TV. And before I forget, tomorrow is Veterans Day, so if we have any veterans online or in the audience, I thank you again for your service. I know there are a few of us that are there. And I'd like to introduce the members that are present right now. We all have name tags. Bill Brooks and Tony. I think everybody kind of knows us by now. Okay? Do we have any comments from the committee yet?
I'd like to just say a brief statement here before we get started. The stated purpose of the zoning regulations is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community. I'd like to assure the community that this is what we've tried to accomplish. We are your neighbors and we're property owners ourselves, and we strongly believe in property rights. We also believe that owning property comes with certain responsibilities to your neighbors and to the community as a whole. These proposed regulations are our best efforts to promote a balance between the rights and responsibilities. We believe that we have accomplished this in a public fashion with open meetings, with published agendas and minutes. Therefore, words such as sneaky, power grab, and the like should have no place here. These proposed regulations, these are proposed regulations. The only power involved is that given to the Wallingford voters to approve or disapprove these proposed regulations. Thank you.
And I'd like a minute, copy it up for the minutes.
Sure.
All right. We're all here because background on this is the Planning Commission has been working on revising the zoning for approximately 23 months, give or take, including through COVID. No zoning is perfect, no laws are perfect. Through the last six years, the previous zoning administrator has made various suggestions on how to improve and make it easier for everybody. Over the past six years, as I said, we have been meeting, we have been meeting through COVID, we have had Zooms, we have had participants from coming in, there's been no problem, and we have tried to address any and all questions, comments, and everything else coming in, including emails, telephone calls, letters, and so on and so forth. So we have been as transparent as possible. We are up to, actually, it says draft number 21. I counted it the other day. I counted the drafts that I had soft copies of that it took us approximately nine months to come up with definitions that we thought were reasonable. We went from a page and a half to 13. If anybody has, I'm going to mute everybody, please. Can y'all hear me? We went from a page and a half of definitions to 13 plus pages of definitions. Some we threw out, some we've changed. They're not perfect. I looked them over and I go, well, we probably should have tweaked them this way, and so on and so forth. Every single change that we have put up there in one form or the other has basically been put online and put up for comments. And we've had some comments, and we've taken them into consideration. And one or two we've accepted, one or two we changed what the comment was. But overall, as Tony said, we are all property owners, and we're not out to get anybody. It's not a power grab. It's to try and make it easier for people to understand what's going on and for people to get done what they need to do. And to stay underneath, if you will, the Vermont statutes on different things. There are Vermont statutes that we do have to follow, whether we like it or not. So what I would like to do for the process is on Zoom, when I call on you, please identify yourself, because I just have some first names and I don't know exactly who you are. I will try to, I have the speaker up as far as I can on my computer. If the audience in the room cannot hear you, I will try to paraphrase what you're saying. If I do it wrong, please do correct me. For the audience here, when you're asked to speak or when you are speaking, if you could identify yourself to the people on Zoom, and also for note taking, that would be greatly appreciated. I do ask that one person speak at a time. Sorry. And I do ask that those on Zoom, please do mute yourselves if you can. I will be happy to unmute you when you need it, okay? So can we start with the people on Zoom to make it easier for them to understand? So I have a John. If you can identify yourself, John?
He's to unmute?
Uh-uh, nope. He can ask to unmute himself, and he's not. Okay? So I have Kathy Allen. Kathy, can you unmute yourself, please?
Hi. Then aye.
Okay. Do you have comments for the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted us just to identify ourselves at this point. Are you going to do any presentation before audience comment, or?
I don't have any presentation to give because with the draft that has been up there and everything, I thought most people would be familiar with it.
Well, I have to say, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I have had an opportunity to go through it all. I think, as you know, Eric, I know that you all have worked on this for a long time, and I have tried to plug in a couple of times to, just to know what the process was going to be and what was going to be changed. I think it was very difficult to know when and what you were going to be dealing with in terms of amendments, because I kept looking, month after month, for specific items. You did not, the Planning Commission didn't put out a listing of what would be discussed. So I think, I have a concern that that, when you say, well, everybody had a chance to comment, I mean, I did try any number of times to find out what was happening and what you would be reviewing. And the agendas did not, the agenda did not include specifics about what was being proposed for amendments. So that made it very difficult for anybody to get a handle on this, I think. Second thing is, the 2015 final regulations, the zoning regulations that were adopted, they were done in tandem, very carefully, with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, which had, you had a grant for the town to use the Planning Commission and their expertise to be sure that the regs that were put together were legally clear. Have you been working with an attorney on these regs? And if so, who is it?
We've been sending copies of the regs to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Ed Bove has copies of them.
Oh, and has he made any comments or suggestions?
Yes.
I have not seen that in any of the minutes at all.
He?
But, so could you, I mean, were there months in particular?
No.
Anyway, that's a question I have. Because going through the regs in a cursory way so far, I think there are places where specifically there are legal provisions that should be cited, and they're not. For example, in the definitions, you talk, you refer to the Vermont agricultural law. I think that's the reference you used. And it's not the, it's not the agricultural law, it's the regulations that had been in the original 2015 zoning bylaw, zoning regulations. And they specifically cited specific paragraphs in the regulations related to agricultural use that I think are still important to include. And so, excuse me, my voice is pretty bad tonight. So that's just one small example of the kind of thing that seems to have been brushed out of the proposed regs that needs to be put back in. I think it was there for a reason. And then I would appreciate putting in some written comments about the rest.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Erica?
Yes.
Can I just make a request that we perhaps switch from the Zoom attendees to the live attendees, and then you can go back and forth?
Yeah. Yes, that's not a problem. We'll start with you, if you?
No, I don't have a comment specifically right now, but.
Okay. Any comments from the audience? Yes, please identify yourself.
Wayne Kelly. I just want to show you a picture. Erica tells me this does not need a permit. It's a solar panel. And my question is, I've read something about screening in here proposed. Will that be retroactive? And?
The screening is for an industrial size solar operation.
I have to look at this every day. And I just spent $6,000 to remove my power lines and barrier and the telephone poles. And this is what I get to look at. This is somebody's house that doesn't even live here, they live in Florida. And they're basically legal money laundering, having the power company back them up with their solar panels so they don't have electric bill. And is this accessible to the property? It's a structure. It's worth money, it's valuable, it costs $12,000 or $13,000. Is this assessed by the assessor?
We don't do assessments.
Yeah, I would imagine the listers would get involved in that.
Well, it does not permit, how would it go forward to the lister then?
Right now, we don't, we do not do permits for solar panels.
Well, Jason Stone did it.
Jason, Jason Stone put in an application, he didn't get a permit. He put in an application for it. It went before the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and he went to the Public Utilities Commission on it.
At least he was kind enough to notify the neighbors not to have us come back from the weekend and have this in front of our face. So that's, that's not going to be retroactive for screening?
No, generally speaking, in fact, I think it's stated in there that anything that is in effect or is current is grandfathered in automatically.
So how would you know what to screen if there's no permit required?
One of the problems we have, and I'm not blaming anybody, is we have been waiting on the Energy Committee to give us a plan that we could incorporate, and they haven't done it. The only thing we could do, which is what we did, is put in the section on screening and landscaping.
All right, that's fine. But the whole thing is that the Energy Committee doesn't approve structures. You people approve structures.
It depends on the structure.
Oh. So who's going to approve the next solar panel by my neighbors?
Again, it depends on the Vermont statutes, because you cannot prevent somebody from putting up solar panels. The best right now, and I'm paraphrasing it because I don't have it at my fingertips, right now is, you can ensure that they're included in the setbacks, you can ask that they be screened, but right now, we don't have any legal standing to go to your neighbors, and I know exactly the house you're talking about, and to say, hey, you need to screen this.
The other neighbor next door did it at Gorman's property, and they said that they put it behind in consideration for other neighbors.
Correct.
But the other thing is, with the milf finish aluminum, it reflects even more besides the panels. At least you could require it has some type of a color on it, so it darkens it down. I mean, that's a simple thing to do.
I'm not arguing with you, but what I'm saying is, this is one of the reasons why we try to have zoning regulations. Right now, there are no zoning regulations that that individual is going against.
Well, how about the Department of Revenue Services? I mean, these people are not even here, and their meter's running backwards, so they benefit financially.
I'm sorry, but that again, that would be the blister on the taxes. The Planning Commission does not assess taxes or do any assessments like that.
All right. But if somebody brings up, finds something that was illegally done, who do you, who's the authority to tell a lister to go there?
It depends on what it is. My suggestion is you stop in the office on Monday, and let's sit down, and we'll have a talk about it, but.
I'll be back out of town again. I came back last night purposefully for this, but.
Or give me a phone call, if you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. John, are you ready to talk? No. All right.
Directly onto that thing.
All right. A Jim, B-A-G-N-A-L-L? No? Okay. Lucy? Do you want to unmute yourself, please?
Hi there. What's the crowd look like there?
It's a full house, Lucy. Come on down.
It looks something beautiful.
There you go.
I wonder if you can turn me around.
Hold on.
I can't see her, but you guys, she can see.
Turn me, turn me down, Erica.
Excuse me?
Turn me downward, I can't see. All right. Hi, folks. Thanks, Erica. You can turn me back around, I'll look at you. Thanks very much for having this forum. I think to Kathy's point, well, first, thanks for all the work you've done, and I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, so it's really comprehensive. I guess one thing, to Kathy's point, that might be helpful is a little bit of education to the public in terms of what you have done. I know it's available to read, but I think it's a pretty significant change, so maybe in the future, I guess one question I had was, what is the process from today forward towards adoption? I don't know that I'm clear on that, and maybe others have a question as well.
Sure, that's not a problem. What we will do is we will take comments, suggestions for changes, reviews, et cetera, et cetera. I've taken written emails over the last few days, and then the Planning Commission will sit down, go through them, and work with them one way or the other. I'm not going to say, yes, they're going to do it, no, they're not going to do it, but they will discuss it, they'll review it. Change the proposed zoning if needed, and just continue on until the Planning Commission feels that it's done what it has. Technically speaking, and this is strictly technical, but it is legal, we can take all of the comments from tonight, all of the written email comments, and we can even take from porch forum, I think, and incorporate them. Once the Planning Commission votes that it's satisfied, that it's done everything that it possibly can do, we do not need another public hearing. We can just go ahead and submit it to the Select Board, as long as we don't go outside of the parameters of what was received. I'm not going to say we will, I won't say we, we're not going to, because I don't speak for the Planning Commission. It is a commission, we will vote on it. But right now, tonight, it's to get public comments and help answer any questions, if at all possible.
And then, once the Select Board approves it?
No. The Select Board accepts it, and?
It's a town meeting vote?
Well, the Select Board can vote to accept it, or they can vote to send it back to us and say, no, you still need to continue to change. If they vote to accept the zoning as stated, then the Select Board themselves will hold their own public hearing. And then the Select Board will decide if it should go to the voters or not in the form that they've accepted it or send it back to us for more work. So we're not the end-all, far from it. It is, it will be redrafted if necessary, because the Select Board says it should be, or the Select Board may say, no, it looks good, and put it out. They will also do a warrant, public hearing, just as we do. And I imagine that the Planning Commission will be there that evening, whenever it is. And this will take place, has to take place, before it can be brought to the town meeting, if, if there's time. It's always a matter of how much time do we have?
Right. Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. And then I would say that, two things. One, there are, and I think a written, perhaps, the most efficient way to give my comments on some specifics would be written. I was just, one thing in particular I was looking at was the screening requirements for kind of what we call alternate energy. I think maybe the language could be tightened up a little bit to be a little more specific in terms of what the town is looking for, so just with spacing and kind of types of plants, to give the folks that use those screening ordinances, to apply those to their projects. That way, yeah, because that is a part of the PUC process, is to evaluate towns' screening requirements for solar. So thanks for including that, and I think I will follow up with that with some written comments. And then the last thing I was wondering is, if the Planning Commission has sought any municipal planning grants offered by the state? I am sure you're aware there's a grant ending the 15th, I think, with, you know, public monies to hire consultants and help with the process. I know you guys are far along, but maybe, maybe that's a possibility, depending on how long this process goes, to get some, I know the, you know, Ed Bove and the RPC are helping, but a private consultant is able to really focus in and hone in on maybe some of the issues. So I guess that would be just another comment or suggestion.
Okay. All right. We've got it then. Okay? Any other comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay? Yes?
Just follow up on Lucy's comments.
Wait a minute, who are you?
Doug Roger.
Excuse me?
Doug Roger. And follow up on Lucy's comments. I did have a comment about the screening issue on solar, commercial solar projects, 150 KW, bigger. And I think I'm correct that the current, the zoning, the regs that propose are per two trees, per 100 feet on the boundary, and I think that's as minimal, it's described in there as minimal. But I think that standard is pretty darn minimal, mineral, minimal, and won't really amount to much of any kind of screening. And I guess I would just point to the example along Route 7 and the 103 intersection, the Clarendon, solar installation. If we had even two trees per 100 feet along that boundary, it'd be pretty ineffective screening. So I would, I would ask you to consider making that standard, if you have more questions about that.
This is, this is one of my frustrations, to be honest with you. It'd be nice if the state would come up with something that we could use, but the state has right now.
I agree. And again, that really doesn't speak to the residential, that's really, that 150 KW area.
Well, if, we do know that zoning, I'm sorry, solar panels are here, and Pittsfield, I think, in a joking way, is calling itself the solar capital of Vermont, because they've got so many different solar farms in there, small ones. And it's coming. And of course, this is one of the reasons for the revision, because the 2015 doesn't even mention it. So, okay, thank you. All right. Tammy?
Could you have the people online, please say your last names also?
Okay. Tammy?
I think that was Lucy there.
Yes, it was. Yeah. I thought, I thought I did. Is this, this is Tammy?
Burdick.
Tammy Burdick. Sorry. Okay? B U R?
B U R D I C K.
All right. You're on.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions, because I was a little confused by all of the rules and things concerning my land. I don't live in town, so I don't know, you know, I guess it's a little different, because the farm animals thing caught my eye and stuff like that. The setback is, I think that changed, right? I could tell by the paperwork that that was changing. So I guess the things that I was concerned about was the camper in question and a swimming pool. Is there a rule on swimming pools, how far back from the road? Is that what you're talking about, from the road, that the pools have to be?
There, there actually is no. This is Tammy?
Burdick.
Tammy Burdick. Sorry? Okay? B U R?
B U R D I C K.
All right. You're on.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions, because I was a little confused by all of the, the rules and things concerning my land. I don't live in town, so I don't know, you know, I guess it's a little different, because the farm animals thing caught my eye and stuff like that. Um, the setback is, I think that changed, right? I could tell by the paperwork that that was changing. So I guess the things that I was concerned about was, um, the camper in question and a swimming pool. Um, is there a rule on swimming pools, how far back from the road? Is that what you're talking about? From the road, that the pools have to be?
There, there actually is no, um, there's nothing on the pools, except that they have to follow Vermont, and they have to be secure, um, and that would be more for a insurance purpose than anything for the homeowner. But no, you can't, uh, as long as you stay, well, it depends on where you live, of course, but, um, for the most part, as long as you stay within the setbacks, then you want a swimming pool, and, um, you don't, well, if you want it in your front yard, you've got the setbacks, and you live in the ag area, um, you know, it would be possible. I'm not saying you could do it, please don't quote me, but, uh, it, it would really depend on where you want to put it, um, and everything. I mean, I li, I, I live in...
I put it out back.
Yeah.
But I just need to know if it's, if it's 50 feet or 100 feet, or do I need to keep going?
Yeah. Um, it's in the setbacks from the property line. As long as you stay within your backyard, um, I don't think there would be any problem. But again, that, uh, that is something that, uh, if you want to contact the zoning administrator on Monday, give me a call.
Okay.
Okay?
So, it doesn't just mean from the front row, it's talking about that my perimeter of my, my neighbors?
It's talking, if you're talking about your backyard, it's the property line in the backyard, not from the road.
Oh, okay. Because I've never had a problem. I'm on a dead-end dirt road.
And if you're at the end, I don't think anyone would care.
So I was just thinking, oh, my gosh, is there rules now? I better check.
No.
To be sure, so I don't have to move my, it's just an above ground pool I put in every year.
Yeah. No, the...
And the other thing was, um, the camper situation. Um, if I had, if, are we not allowed to have company come? Because I have two different family members that live out of state, that come with their campers, and, you know, I don't think they'd be staying for like six months or anything like that. That's crazy, but, you know, if they were going to stay for a couple of weeks, or are they not allowed to come at all?
Of course not. No, 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 no.
Because I, I listened to some of the other meeting that you guys had in October, and I was, that's why I was a little confused, where you said, it has to be your camper, meaning my camper.
No. No.
No, so I can have company?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Nobody, nobody's going to be checking.
And they could stay for like two months.
The whole intent of that section was the fact that, uh, campers, especially here in the north, are not designed to be year-round, and camp...
Who would want to?
Well, that's true.
Freeze to death.
Could be.
Right.
Um, but it's also the fact that you do have, uh, you may have wastewater, uh, and you may have a, shall we say, waste problem, because...
Right.
You can't dump wastewater on the ground, that is against Vermont statutes.
Right.
You can't hook it up to, or, uh, to your, um, septic system, municipality, and so on. You've got to dispose of it some way. So...
Right.
The easiest thing is, let's face it, most people would drive it to a legal dumping site, do what they have to do, and drive it back. So your 21 days, it's basically saying, you know, please get rid of your waste, come on back, nobody cares.
Right.
Nobody is going to be going around saying, well, that camper hasn't moved in six months, and there are people living in it, unless, um, it's pretty obvious that it's becoming a permanent home.
Right.
You know? But...
Like, and that was my other question. Yeah, because obviously, if my family came here, which they have, uh, for like a few days or something, uh, they come inside the shower, go to the bathroom anyway, they don't even do, you know, any of that stuff.
Yeah.
Um, and I have well water, so it's not an issue, I'm not on town water or anything like that, if they hooked up, you know, a hose.
That's fine.
But the other thing, too, I guess, was I wanted to clarify the camper and the tiny house thing. We're not allowed to like, is a tiny house, like, I'm thinking shed, you know?
No.
A shed's not a tiny house. Are we allowed to build a shed? I know we built one, and we just, you know, had to get a permit for it, and...
Sure. A tiny house and a shed are two different things. A tiny house is a manufactured...
Nobody's living in the shed. Right.
Well, I don't know. I've lived in the shed when I was in the doghouse.
Exactly. That's what my husband said, what if we get separated, and I can't go live in my shed?
I'm not going to address that as a wife, my husband is in the audience. But a tiny house is exactly that. It's a manufactured, and it is called a tiny house, because that's exactly what it is. There is a difference between a tiny shed and a house, and if you want to call me on Monday, I'll be happy to go through the whole explanation.
Okay.
All right?
Okay. Because I have a, the other question I had was, um, we've been thinking for a while now, if I can get my husband to like, give me the okay. It's just a little port on the side of my house. We have one big port, but we're thinking about just a little enclosed screen port.
You need a permit.
Is there any rules with that now?
Yeah.
Um, we're not going to lay a slab...
Call the zoning administrator.
...that's going to be, you know...
That's a zoning administrator question.
Okay. Okay.
Call the office.
But it's, it's allowed, right, to build, you know, basically?
Of course it is.
You probably have...
Just need a permit.
I read some dimension issues and things like that.
You just need a permit. That's okay.
Okay. All right. That was, uh, kind of all that I had.
All righty.
And I just want to hang out and listen to everybody else.
Feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica.
Okay. Questions from the audience?
I do have one question, Kurt Houghton.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Kurt, K-U-R-T?
Yes.
Yep.
Houghton.
H-O? Yes, sir.
Just a point of curiosity, but you mentioned the tiny homes, I heard somebody else say something about that, but is there some proposed regulation against those, or in your new proposal?
They're mentioned in the new zoning, um, because, again, in the 15, uh, tiny ha, no, nobody had anything on tiny houses.
Well, I don't need, I'm, it doesn't affect me necessarily, but I mean, but I'm curious if that means that you can't live in a house unless it's over a certain size, or...
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, gosh, no.
No, no. Um, no, tiny houses are, are those houses that are, what, six to 700 square feet or less?
Oh, I understand that.
And they can be put on the back of a trailer and kind of moved around as you want? That's a tiny house.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
But is there a regulation that says it restricts those in any way, as long as they're attached to a proper structure?
It doesn't restrict them. What we're trying to do is just make mention of the fact that those things are being put up around every place, and they just have to meet setbacks. That's all, you have to be specific and, and make sure that where you put it, you meet the setbacks.
Oh, you're just trying to, yeah...
Just to define tiny house and...
They're not exempt to the setbacks.
No, no, not at all. Not exempt.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just didn't know if there was some regulation banning them, or...
It's on, it's, uh, section 427, and it's on page 14, in the regulations.
Yeah.
In the proposed regulations. Okay? And again, in 215, there was no such thing as a tiny house, and now there are tiny houses all over the place.
Oh, of course, yeah. I don't have my glasses, so I don't, it all makes sense to me. Thank you, though.
And unfortunately, I just had cataract surgery, so I can see really close, but I have a very, you're, very difficult time seeing who's who, so I apologize, and I don't want to be taking my glasses back and forth, so... But that's, um, that, we tried to address it as much as we can, but, uh, again, it's, uh, you know, if it's carted around on the back of a trailer, is it an RV? Is it a mobile home? Is it a tiny house? And that's what we tried to address. Okay?
Very well, thank you.
Right? Okay, so, back online to, let's see, um, Thomas Wicker, if you could hear me? Um, okay, I guess not. Anne Pace? No?
I'm here, but I have nothing to say at the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually, I was, I, I, I wasn't able to locate the actual zoning maps showing, I, I live in East Wallingford, so showing the divisions of what would constitute rural, agricultural versus, um, residential.
There's a map in the zoning office, and there's a map in the town clerk's office.
Oh, so that the, just the, the zones remain the same? They haven't changed? You not proposing changes to those?
No, we're not. Not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay? Question from the audience? Yes?
Barbara Bushi, just to go back to the camper thing, why, why was 21 days chosen?
I think we pulled that from some other town's reg. Uh, if there's a different suggestion, uh, we're open to that. The thing that we were trying to get away from was, I think, somebody parking a camper in their yard and, and just living in that, you know, for months and months at a time, and, and...
I mean, I, obviously, you have to be concerned about the health issues, certainly.
Yeah.
But, you know, a couple scenarios, I mean, I think about people coming to visit, or you have a camper, and you have it out there, and so, so there's no restriction, I understand that, I just didn't understand the 21 days. But I do think about the person who might be building a house, who might have a camper there to be living in until they can get in.
That's, that's an entirely different story, because it's a temporary structure until such time as they move into their full-time. This would be, for example, having how my grandchildren coming up and spending all summer, and me parking a camper in the backyard. I'm quite sure my neighbors would not exactly like having a camper in the backyard, but understand, we share the driveway and things like that. Um, if it was, you know, for six months, or whatever, but depending, I mean, if you're building a house, you obviously need a place to stay, nobody's saying you can't, and understand too, no one is going to go around and say, whoa, that camper's been there for 21 and a half days, and things like that. It really is to get people to understand that campers are not permanent structures, and they're there temporarily. And of course, in the summertime, everybody camps. Uh, we do have people that live, uh, here in the summer, and they winter in, in Florida. It's a whole different story, you know? But it really is to prevent people, in a way, to say, well, I'm putting a camper on and making it a permanent structure. If you move it every 21 days, give or take, it can't be permanent. And that really, there, there was, that was the whole intent, and we did, I think, pull it from one of the other towns, and their suggestion. But if somebody says a month, and it's reasonable, why not? We're not tied to anything in the regulations. This is not, uh, well, if this was New Hampshire, I'd say it's not done in granite, but I'll say so, Vermont soapstone instead. You know? Everything is changing. Yeah, it's not even done in marble.
I, I mean, I guess I can imagine, I don't, I don't think about it in Wallingford, but I suppose it could happen. Somebody might want to come up for the summer, which could be three months.
Yeah.
And, uh, maybe people are feeling like they're being told what they could do.
The idea is really more of a health issue than anything else.
I mean, it's a health issue, they could be there a week. I mean, it's going to be addressed, because it's a health issue.
Yeah. Yeah. And the fact that, um, and I'm not saying anyone in Wallingford has done that, but, you know, there are cases throughout the state where people have just, um, disposed of their waste in a manner that is not conducive to the environment. Is that a good way to put it?
Well, that's, that's a health issue, certainly.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's a public health issue. Uh, I had a, a question, and I, this is a little off-topic, but not really. Why do, why do the regs say that, um, you know, if you're going to store your boat in your backyard, cover it? And it's the same thing, because if you don't cover your boat, water collects in it, and comes springtime, we have mosquitoes. And having been a sailor on the Chesapeake Bay for a number of years, um, you know, most, most boat owners are going to cover their boats anyway, because you don't want to spend three weeks cleaning it up from the winter. But, you know, you scenario, you might live to, live in store during the winter, and all of a sudden, the boat's full and, of water, and they're off for a month. You know? It's a health issue. Okay? Right? Uh, okay, uh, is there anyone online that would like to say something? Feel free to unmute. And just say who you are, please? And this is Sabra Schulman?
Hi, yes, I'm Sabra Schulman.
Sorry.
I'm actually just here to listen and learn.
Okay.
So I don't have really any comments.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Um, anybody else online to have any comments, or are you just listening in? Nope? So, any other questions, comments?
I have two.
Who are you?
I'm Peggy Sol.
Sorry, Peggy. Yes, ma'am?
I have two questions. One is, in the second paragraph on page 15, um, going back to the, to the screening, I don't really understand what that paragraph, um, is saying. I don't understand the, in, I'm not sure whether it's the language that's a little bit awkward, so I don't really understand it, or whether it's what the intent is. The part in particular that I don't understand is the part having to do with shades, south walls, and...
Well, this, this is for 150 kilowatt solar installation or greater, and nobody, except the commercial operation, would have that.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's really, I'm here for, if, if you, depending where you live, and everything, if you put your solar panels in, and you have to put it so you can get the light, which is why you have solar panels, obviously, and the only way to do that is on the south side, and your neigh, and your neighbors got huge trees, you have to move your panels around and everything, then this, to a certain extent, allows you to move into the setbacks. You may need a variance, but it allows you to move into the setbacks. You can't cut your neighbor's trees down. You know? I, you might want to, but I would highly not recommend it. You know? And that's, that's really it, because solar energy right now, people, I think, are, are putting, we, we all want solar. I have a slate roof, so there's no way that I'm going to be able to put solar up on my roof. My, uh, if we wanted to do a solar panel, it would have to be on the south side of the house, facing next door. And, um, right now, any landscaping I put in then would shade over the panels, because I live in the village proper here. So, the neighbor, by rights, could complain, but on the other hand, if that's the only thing I can do, then the neighbor and I would have to work it out one way or the other. And that is strictly a, a scenario, okay? I'm not planning on putting solar panels in. What I want is that Daisy, that Green Mountain has, that's 20 feet, but that's me. So, um, any other comments?
Uh, wait, uh, I have two comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to just read this again quickly, which I'm a little focused. My other question, going back to the issue of RVs in your yard, it seems to me though, what you all have been saying about the intent of the 21 days, and the concern being predominantly a health issue concern, um, it should, perhaps it would be more helpful if that were explicit in the language. And when you say nobody's going to come around and say, well, you have been there 21 and a half days, well, if it's okay for it to be more than 21 days, because nobody's going to hold you for 21 days, then the 21 days shouldn't be there. I think that whatever it's going to say should reflect what you actually expect to have happened. Well, it says 21 days, that that means 21 days, and if all it means is 21 days, and then you have to go and empty your, your, whatever, and your waste, and then you can come back again for 21 days, you know, if the point is you have to empty your waste every 21 days, then it should say that, or if it's, if it's, you can't have anybody can't have anybody using toilet facilities in their RV that's in the driveway for 21, you know? But whatever the issue is, it seems to me that, that you may be banning something that's perfectly fine, somebody staying in the RV with showering and toiletting in the house, in order to address the waste issue, where maybe the waste issue should be addressed directly, if that's really the concern. No? Thank you.
But again, the thing is, not saying the RV is a permanent structure, and that is also part of the intent.
Right. So, then if somebody's living there for five months in their RV while they're building their house, you were saying that's okay, you have to have a place to live, but that's not what the regulation says.
But they're building, they're building a house to move into the permanent structure. That would be like a construction site, to a certain extent. We do allow storage containers on construction sites for up to a year, so...
But that's not a storage container.
Well...
So, I just, you know, I just have a problem with that. I just think that the language needs to reflect what you actually want to have happen. If it's okay, because you're building your own house, and you're living there while you're building your own house, then that should say that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Debbie Sgram, can I take this off just for a moment? My concern, we're going to be moving to the village, and we have an RV that we will not be living in, and we will only be camping in it when we're off camping.
Sure.
So it needs to be parked there, and our new house has a place to put it. That would be really nice, but it won't meet the 10 feet away from the sideline. And in order to meet the 10 feet away from the sideline, we would have to rip out shelves and put it right in the middle of the yard.
And you don't want to do that?
I don't think anybody would want to see this thing sitting out there.
By the way, congratulations.
Okay. So, I mean, if it's moved all the time, is this, it's a very...
Yeah, I think we need to massage that language in that section to clarify some things. I mean, you own a camper, and you park it in your yard, you've got to park it in your yard. You're not living in it.
It's got to be stored for the winter.
It's going to be stored.
It's a good idea.
So, I think we need to massage that language a little bit to clarify some of these issues.
Yeah. If I, if I recall correctly, part of the issue about storing it in your yard was so you don't, an individual doesn't store it on, you know, in the front yard, kind of make an effort to get it out of the way. I mean, would you, as a neighbor, want to look over and see this RV? And that really was more likely the whole intent. I think when we discussed this was a year and a half ago, and that was one of the topics, I think, that was brought up, was, you know, somebody parks an RV in their front yard for the winter, do you want to see it?
Well, if, if we had to do the 10-foot thing, that's what it would be doing.
Yeah.
But if it could be tucked over, then it wouldn't bother any neighbors.
Yeah, but again...
It's not a permanent structure.
We'll see what you come up with.
And it, and it's...
We'll figure it out.
And to a certain extent, you also have to remember, it's the doctrine of reasonableness. I mean, if you are moving from where you're currently living to a smaller, much smaller lot, and the only place you can park it is on the side of the house, because you can't get to the back, again, it's the doctrine of reasonableness.
Yeah.
And, and really, that's, the regs are, they're here, and they, and believe in it. I was in the Army, you know, you talk regs, I can follow, I can follow them. But sometimes you have to say, "Okay, what's the doctrine of reasonableness?" And I've already been asked, as the zoning administrator, the same question. "Well, what happens if I can't move it into my backyard, because I'm going to have to tear up shrooms?" Don't park it in your backyard. Don't park it in your front yard. If you can park it into the side or something like that, cover it. I mean, it's, it's, nothing is, unfortunately, cut and dry. And it is the doctrine of reasonableness, as far as, I think, most of us on the community have been concerned. How would we, as homeowners, feel if the regs were imposed on us? And how would we, as homeowners, feel if they weren't? And we go from there.
I think, you know, if you're nice to your neighbors, then they might let you off on a foot or two of boundary issues with, with your RV. I mean, you have to realize that, you know, you have to take the, your neighbors into consideration when, with these regs, and so you have to strike a balance here. And I think that, you know, first of all, we're not going to be checking boundary lines in RVs. If your neighbor doesn't complain, and it's, looks reasonable, I don't think anyone is going to give you any trouble.
And, for example, in, in my situation, I share the, as I mentioned, I share the driveway with my next-door neighbor. And in order for them to get their boat into the back, they have to come onto my yard to swing it over. And sometimes, they don't use the driveway, they use the south side of the house, which is not driveway, because they can just do a straight L, and it's my property. You know? Am I going to complain to them? Why? You know? So, I mean, I like my neighbors. So, sorry. Any other, any other questions? Comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I have one more, Kurt Hope. Are there any proposals that would regulate small businesses within the town, either existing or potentially incoming?
In which way, sir?
Well, in, in, well, I don't know, I mean, zoning restrictions that would not allow certain businesses in the town, or in certain areas?
Oh, yes.
Yes, there are, and those exact same things are in the current. That was not, I don't believe that was one of the ones we changed.
No.
No, I mean, I, I certainly understand that, that regulations exist currently, but I didn't, I just want to make sure there are no new changes proposed, or if there are, that I'm aware of them.
No, they're in there. Crematoriums, tanning...
Danries, yeah, I saw that. That probably hasn't been relevant for 150 years. That's fine, thank you.
Yeah. No, that section was not changed at all. I know, I received an email from a resident late last night, asking about a marijuana dispensary, and how come it's in the regulations that you can't have it? And it does say in there, again, it's in the 215, and it says, "No marijuana dispensary," and I think meth, basically, a meth...
Well, now that you can grow your own, you don't need a dispensary.
And frankly, I told the resident that, at this particular time, it's in the current zoning, it's in the proposed, and if the resident feels strongly enough to change it, that would have to be a town-wide decision, much like, say, a funeral house trying to put in a crematorium.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Because it would affect the whole of the town, and I would strongly, if it does come before us, I would strongly recommend that we address it with the select board.
No, understandable, for sure. I, I would just hope that the, you know, the town would continue to be, you know, business-friendly, to reasonable small businesses, of course, not, you know, that industry. And I appreciate the town has been, you know, easy to, to work with over the last...
Kurt, as soon as you want to open that brew pub, we'll be right down.
Yeah, I'll be right on that.
I know somebody that would love it, and I won't mention my husband's name. No, and as a matter of fact, as you all know, we may have opening soon, next to the post office here in Wallingford, Tamara, with her Italian restaurant. Other, well, friends of mine kind of laugh and say that we may be the new Brandon, in the fact that we seem to be attracting more and more small businesses and restaurants. Why not?
I think it's a great thing. And Brandon is, is turning the corner at big time, and it's really kind of neat to see today.
And I think, I would love to see, personally speaking, I'd love to see Wallingford have, East Wallingford, South Wallingford, and Wallingford, more restaurants, small, local restaurants, serving good food. You know? I mean, I like to cook, but I hate to wash up dishes, so why not? You know? I don't always want to go into Rutland to pick up a pizza or something like that, or I know Sal's has pizza, so please don't misunderstand me, but Chinese, why not? You know? So, we are, we didn't put in anything under, as I believe, we didn't put anything restricting any businesses, except what was already in here, in the current one.
I mean, I'm not in the town, the township, per se, we're out of, out of town, so I...
Yeah, sure. But wouldn't, wouldn't it be nice to do kind of, like, you know, dessert in one place, and appetizers in another?
It's a grand idea, and, and, you know, if those things can be done, and, you know, and still keep the historic look and feel of the town without having improper signage and whatever else comes along with that. But, you know, currently, like, stonies down there, you know, they're real, a real classy sign, it looks nice, and, you know?
Sure.
Good.
Well, why not?
Yeah, right.
I think, personally, I think it would be a great idea. You did notice I put dessert before I did the rest, because we're all over 21, we can have dessert first. Any other comments?
Erica?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I think just to follow up with Lucy Thayer's comment about...
Wait, 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 Kathy? This is Kathy Allen speaking. Go ahead.
Just to follow up on Lucy Thayer's comment about a possible planning grant, was the planning commission aware of that, and have you discussed it before?
I was not aware of it, so I, no, I don't think we did discuss it.
No, I mean, we've been working with Ed Bove, and usually, if something like that's available, and he thinks we ought to apply for one, he'll let us know.
Yeah.
And we haven't had that input from him. I think he thinks that we're close enough that we should probably just get this one finished, and go on.
Has he come out to discuss any of this at any open meetings?
I don't believe he has, no.
No.
The, the list you put out on October 18th was a partial, was, quote, "A partial list of changes to the zoning regulations," right?
Yes, ma'am.
And my question was, why is it just a partial list, when you want us to look at this as a final, you know, a final product from all of you? Will you be putting out a full list of changes? Because it's pretty opaque. I mean, you have to come into the, to the town hall, or, you know, get online and print up all your changes, which aren't terribly well-reflected in the, in the 2021 draft, compared to 2015.
Those are available online.
So, it's got to be some sort of final document that everybody can look at, along with a, a full list of all the changes that are being proposed.
I don't think there are any changes.
That, that list in your hand took two hours, and I was asked...
But it's not partial.
I know, that's my point. It took two hours to do a partial list. I have been...
Can I?
Go.
Kathy, I'd like to ask you, what software...
I'm sorry, that, whose jacket?
I'm sorry, this is Bill Brooks.
Oh, okay, Bill.
Hi. And I'd like to know what software you might use to do that kind of thing. We're just using, like, a basic word processing, and it's all going through Erica, and she's trying to keep track of, of all the, all the stuff that goes in and comes out. So, if, if you know of some software that, that can easily take, make note of all those changes, I'd love to hear about it, and then we can start using that.
Listen, Bill, get any, any attorney who lives in and practices in, or lives in and practices someplace else in Wallingford, and they will give you a very easy way to do that. It is not that hard. And I've been asking, I asked about this back in, I don't know, last March? It is not that hard.
Okay, then, I guess I need to speak with you about that.
It just seems to me, for full transparency for the public, that we should have a full list, and we should have a document that shows in red what the changes are. And speaking of that, can you give me sort of an explication of why the agricultural and rural residential ARR district, minimum setbacks have been changed so substantially?
They haven't.
But they haven't, except for the, we...
Well, they did, yeah.
They have not.
The front minimum setbacks was 150, and it's, for the proposed, it's 50.
It's only if you have, for there are few lots that have sewer and/or water services that are available to them, and since the, I think it's the residential area, right next door that has the same services available, can, can have those setbacks. We thought that it was only fair that the people next door, who could access those, could basically have the rural, the residential setbacks. That's where that came from, and it only applies to a very small area, down, close to town. Otherwise, for almost, you know, 99% of the agricultural rural residential, the setbacks are exactly the same.
And Wes, when you did the changes, you mentioned other towns, have there been models where, you know, you've looked for changes that would apply to Wallingford? Because Wallingford hasn't had that many problems with the 2015 regs, and I wondered if you've looked at models where, you know, it's clear that they've had no problems either, some towns have had more specific problems with some of the things they've tried. So, did you use one model, did you use separate, different towns? What, what, how did you do it?
As you well know, my, the predecessor, Jeff, was zoning administrator for several other towns at the same time, and he was keeping us very well-informed as to what was going on. We used primarily Claridan, Timoth, Brandon, and I believe Shrewsbury, and he would, and several of his changes, I don't think I have a copy of it.
Well, it seems like we only used that stuff when it spoke to an issue that we didn't address in the zoning. It was to try and tighten it up, and at least make mention of certain areas that we hadn't gone into before.
Yeah.
Right.
And we did, and we did use Proctor, which was done very recently, and it was, they did have a grant, and it was done by the RRPC, if I recall correctly, Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And some of the language that everybody is objecting to, strangely enough, is the one that came from that document. So, you know, towns do look at each other's and borrow from them, if you will. So, a lot of, seriously speaking, some of the language that, and I do believe it is the, the solar, the one that seems to be in question, I do believe that is from the Brandon, I'm sorry, the Proctor, I could be wrong, but I think it is from there. So, we didn't make up even the definitions, we looked at definitions from various townships, and online, the dictionary, if you will, to try and get something. So, it wasn't just thought up, "Oh, this is a good idea." We, we tried to do as much research as we could.
Oh, in, in terms of definitions, Erica, the one that I mentioned before, agricultural use, it's defined as land whose use conforms to Vermont Agricultural Act. The 2015 regs talk about, not the Vermont Agricultural Act, but AAPs, the agricultural, I forget the, what it stands for, but it's, it's the specific regs that have a specific enforcement process. And it seems to me really important that the agricultural use definition include that 2015 AAP site, okay?
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, statements? Any questions, comments, statements from anyone online, please? Then, do I have a motion to close the hearing? from anyone online, please? Then, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Nobody else?
I just got here.
Why, we want to close it.
We've got all your comments on paper, so...
Okay. Jeff, would you like to address anything?
Say something, Jeff?
Then, may I have a motion to, our, schedule our next meeting? Do we want to do it?
Just close the public hearing first, I think.
We'll close the public hearing.
And then, we'll go back and revisit these suggestions and changes. And if we need to have, if we feel that enough changes, we need another public hearing, that's what we'll do. So we'll be in touch. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Sabra, what are you baking?
Was there a motion?
Yes. It was a motion. I need a second. Do you want to second it?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.